I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 21st, 2015 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Starting the meeting up here because we got several presentations, but the first one actually is the swearing-in of the library director. Last council meeting, Rebecca Sims was unanimously recommended by the library board and the council unanimously affirmed that recommendation, and so now we're going to do an official swearing-in. Want to come on up? And I warned her that our oath is longer than the president's. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Rebecca Sims.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of library director.
Perform the duties of the office of library director.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of any political party or organization.
Or am I a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member of.
I will not advocate nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any politi- any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
You need to sign the official one. Yeah. And then that goes to the clerk, but I think she'll get a copy of it for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you again. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have two other presentations. One is Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. Have both a board member representative and executive director. Gentlemen.
Well, good evening, mayor, staff, and city council. My name's Kevin Jars, and I'm with Black Hills Energy, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. Just a couple things I wanted to, before the presentation, wanted to notify you of the Sarpy County organization change that we had. As you, some of you know Toby Churchill. He is now the executive director emeritus, and the new director of, the new executive director of the Economic Development Corporation is Andrew Rainbow. And before Andrew provides the presentation, I would just like to give you a brief bio. Andrew has 10 years of housing, workforce, and economic development corporate, development experience. He joined the Greater Omaha Chamber in 2008 as the workforce development consultant. He's held various positions within the Chamber's Greater Omaha Economic Development Partnership, Business Attraction Team, including leading their financial services targeted industrial task force. And in June, Andrew was named the executive director of Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. He is a graduate of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and holds a master's of urban studies in the community and economic development from UNO. So Andrew is now going to provide the presentation this evening.
Thank you, and thanks for having me here tonight. I do have a few handouts, I guess. If you're familiar with some of our presentations in the past, we still have our quarterly report, and I will hand that out to you today to take a look at when you have some time. But I've got another visual report that we'll kind of go over, and then we can talk about some of the things that we've been working on here. All right, so the first one, I think it would be the, our first quarter report. We didn't have a chance to give those earlier this year, so this is just our first quarter report, and I'm not sure if I have enough for everybody. I have enough for the, for our elected officials, but I'm not sure if we have enough for everybody. I do have enough of our second quarter report. And while we're passing those out, I'll just give you a little bit more background on myself. My family moved to Papillion when I was about 10-years-old, so I grew up down at 90th and 370 in the Leewood South neighborhood, so it's fitting that we swore in the library director, because I was just thinking about how I used to hang out here when this was the library. And I was, I'm a little jealous that I didn't get to say an oath like that when I took the job in June, but I promise I don't try to, I don't advocate the overthrow of the government, but, so I'm going to keep one of these, and then if we can pass those out. So, and I started working for Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation last July, actually. I had been with the partnership down at the Omaha Chamber, and I had worked on projects as a project manager, worked on projects at, all over the, all over the metro area. And then about July last year, I started splitting my time where I was working directly for Toby about 50% of the time, and then in January, I became 100% of the time, and then in June, I took over as executive director. So it's been a bit of a fairly swift transition, but I've been working on projects here in Sarpy County for a long time, and I'm very excited to represent my home county and my hometown Papillion. So I hope everybody has one of, one of our kind of infographic sheets here. We're kind of going with the USA Today-style presentation. And we'll start at the very top there on the landed projects. In the past, I know we've probably spent some time talking about some of the economic indicators, some of the induced outcomes of the projects we've been working on, but I'm going to concentrate more on some of the direct outcomes that we've been, that we've been working towards. So you can see in the upper-left section there on the landed projects, we look at the number of projects we had, three landed, or yes, five landed projects in the fifth quarter, or in the second quarter of 2015, excuse me, as compared to three landed projects last year. Year-to-date, we're keeping pace with last year. We've got eight landed projects. And of those projects, we've had a capital investment on the right, you can see there of almost $80 million, and that was about $46.2 million here in the second quarter. A large part of that was in addition to the fidelity data center here in Papillion. So they continue to build that out now, and you can see the crane in the air over there. That equates to about 352 total jobs that we've either retained or attracted to Sarpy County, 227 new jobs, and 125 retained jobs. And 92 of those were here in the second quarter. Our project pipeline, which I think is really important to note, because a lot of the projects that we're closing now, we opened last year, and it takes a while for these projects to kind of play out. And so our pipeline is really strong this year. 32 files opened year-to-date, 28 of them new to market, four of them retained, or businesses that are already here that we've been working with. And of that 28, it doesn't necessarily mean they're from outside of the metro area, or they're from outside of the state. For Sarpy County EDC, we consider anything that doesn't have a presence in the county already, a new-to-market project. So it might be somebody that has a business outside Sarpy but is in the metro area and is looking at either moving here or opening up a new, a new location.
What causes a file to be opened? If a file is open, what's occurred?
That's a good question. It can be a little bit of a gray area, but usually if we've spent some time working on it, and it's a, there's a capital investment attached to it, and there's jobs attached to it, either new or retained, that's when we open a file. So we do a lot of other business assistance, and we're tracking that too, and I want to make that part of our report as well, but that's when we decide to open a file. So prospect visits, which is really an important part of the process here, we feel like once we can get companies to, from outside the area to come and look at Omaha and Sarpy County, that we have a much better shot at landing them. We've had four prospect visits year-to-date, three of them in the second quarter. Second and third quarters really when a lot of those visits occur due to weather and timing, obviously. You look down at the project types, what are the types of projects we're working on? On the new-to-market projects, we've had, you know, bulk of it is kind of in our wheelhouse, manufacturing and office slash service. So those are, service is not necessarily commercial or retail service, but it includes data centers and includes back office where it might be a location for a larger company that's not necessarily their headquarters, but where they have staff located here. The retention-expansion side, we've been a little slow, and quite honestly, that's been, part of that's been due to the transition and the number of new-to-market projects that we've been working on. So we haven't had a whole lot of those moving forward here. We will be looking to hire a new person that will focus on business retention and expansion with, but that was one of the things that I was brought on to do, quite honestly, and so now we need to bring somebody else on to do that here. So hopefully in the fourth quarter, we'll, we'll have somebody on board, and we'll get them set up and start rolling here and really hit that hard in 2015. You know, the, and the part of, the main part of their job will be going out and talking to current businesses that we have here, seeing what their needs are, what their pain points are, and how can we help alleviate some of that. So with that, I mean, I kind of wanted to give you a quick rundown on some of the things that we've been working on. More than happy to answer any questions that you might have. I will caveat that we don't comment directly on projects that we are currently working on, but I can, I can answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Any questions? Appreciate the partnership.
Sure. We appreciate your support, and we look forward to working even more closely here in the future.
Congratulations on the new position, and we did vote for you.
Thank you.
That was unanimous, wasn't it?
Well, yeah. We'll see. No, I was.
It was a unanimous selection, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We have another presentation by the Mayor's Youth Council. If you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves.
I'm Cassidy Christensen.
I'm Haley Roseman.
And I'm Max Lyons.
We're from the Papillion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and we came to talk, we had a meeting last night. We came to talk to you guys about the leadership report, the leadership retreat we're going to be going on on Friday, and then again on August 10th. Officer Taggett put invitations to some of you on your desks or your seats this morning, or for your meeting today, so he, we really encourage you guys to go. There's going to be, all the youth council members hopefully are going to be going to one of the two events. Mayor Black's going to be there, and he's going to speak to us. And we're, it's just going to be, so when we first get there, they have us play games and get to know each other better, because a lot of times kids aren't as active on the council as they want, but when we say that we're going on this retreat, they really want to go because they know it's going to be fun, so then it try, it's, we're trying to get them to start showing up to things and getting back involved with the council. So it's, when we start learning everyone's names, it's the first way, because once we start making connections with each other, they're going to want to be with their friends more and come to the council meetings and see each other. So then we go up on a two-story Odyssey course, and we go through it, and we work together, and we actually have a lot of fun. And last year, I was getting ready to take secretary, the secretary office, and I didn't know anyone's name, and I went to this retreat, and I was like, I know everyone's names, and I know everyone's faces now, and I felt confident when I went to take role, because I was like, I can look before the meeting even starts and know who everyone is, because I went to this. So we were really hoping that some of you guys would like to come and see us and learn some of our names and just get to meet us. We're leaving City Hall at 8:40 on Friday, so if you would like to go, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. And the other part of the situation is, as I understand it, we will be, through Officer Taggett, holding a meeting with Ms. Annette Iman to schedule this meeting, and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss recruiting. Through my understanding of the recruitment process is, we have over 40 people who at least show up to the Mayor's Youth Council, or are expected to show up on a regular basis every month to month, but as of last night, we had roughly 10 to 15 attendees, which poses a problem. And we've had some discussion last night, and I've talked with Officer Taggett personally about doing something about an attendance policy. So we have enough attendees to carry the youth council on, and especially have some people, viable members there who contribute ideas and just to work together, because we only have, you know, if we only have 10 or 15 people showing up on a regular basis, we obviously need more. So the purpose of the meeting is to get up meetings through the schools, take some time out of the school's day to go around and hold a presentation, and hopefully bring more people out.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And council, just in your wards, helping spread the word a little bit of the involvement and what the youth council does, and if you've got some families in the neighborhood, encouraging them to participate. Youth council does great work, so thank you very much. Any questions for them? Can you turn your mic on, Mr. Gaines?
What ages are you looking for?
You can be between junior high and high school. So we have kids who just, they're just now going into junior high, they'll be seventh graders all the way up to, I'm a senior, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good day, you guys.
Mr. Hoynes, administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In case any of you are wondering, there is a correlation between that second speaker, Mr. Max Lyons, and Police Chief Scott Lyons. That's his oldest son. Stick around, Max. If you're ever interested in learning how government should, should operate, Max will bend your ear for a little bit and give you some ideas on that, so welcome. Very engaged in the community already, just lived here a couple of months, so glad to have Max involved in that. We have several projects going on, in case you haven't noticed, throughout the community. Two of the more visible ones, obviously, continue to update you, on the 84th Street Bridge Project really is going as we expected. They're planning on this week switching over lanes and work on the other side, tentatively have a date. We spoke about a full closure of the weekend of August 22nd and 23rd. That would close at 6:00 PM on a Friday night and be back open on Monday morning, but it's just, we knew this going in, it's part of having to get that project done, so the more communication we get out about that, I think the better off we are. I'm pleased to report that the, the second splash pad is officially open, Eagle Ridge Splash Pad, and so certainly residents are able to go out there and enjoy that amenity. Parks Director Gallow sent me a picture about 2:45 today of some residents out there enjoying that, that particular amenity, and if you haven't been out there, it turned out very well. One other project that's, you approved, council members, they bid probably a month ago for the next phase of the Veterans Park. Our end goal there is to have that completed, that flat work, and a, hold a special presentation in November, November 11th, for that facility. If you drive by there now, you'll see, I think, all the flagpoles, are they up, Tony?
Are they?
Nine new flagpoles. It still looks a little rough, because we've got to go in there and do some construction here in the next couple of months, but I think certainly, fingers crossed, by November 11th, you're going to really start to see the substance of what that, that corner's going to look like. Correlated to that, you may have heard some information about a memorial wall out there. Preface my comments as saying that really, it's a partnership with the foundation, but the foundation's really taking the management and ownership of that, and the original, when we open it up, we'll have the first wall actually in place. And the broad parameters, if anybody's interested in making an application, they can contact the Papillion Community Foundation, or Ann Ames. There's certain criteria, you have to be affiliated to Sarpy County, I think work, live, or have served, I think are the three primary criteria that she can give you more detail. Basically, get your, you can buy a nameplate for that person that's in there, but as of last week, they had already sold 30 or 35 nameplates, and we have not advertised it. Each wall will hold about 160, Tony, both sides? 88 names each, and we scaled it where we could have up to 15 or 20 memorials in that particular area, and they'll, they'll pay for themselves after the first one coming through, but that's going to really start to roll out, and we're going to get some more information around the community in the next month or so. But really, the point of contact, there's Executive Director Ann Ames, and City will help out if they have any questions on there. I rested my report, but maybe I'm talking too long here. I think that may have been it. Oh, final thing, Mayor and council members, we did supply you a copy of the proposed FY 1516 budget. The timeframe is, that will be introduced at your next city council meeting, so if you have not had the time to read through that, or if you have specific questions, comments, or concerns, it's really critically important, probably within the next week or so, that you get ahold of me and, or Mayor Black, and we can sit down and talk through those concerns and make whatever modifications we need to make, so that hopefully you'll be able to support the mayor's submittal. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have motion to approve consent? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mumgarth.
On the bridge, the 84th Street Bridge, on August 1st, we're going to have Slide the City, and I assume that the street's going to be closed from First Street North. How is that going to affect the bridge, and how's the bridge going to affect Slide the City?
I think that the end, the southern termination point of Slide the City's at First Street, so there's really not other than an adjacent impact, there's not an impact to that itself.
Where is 84th Street going to be closed on that day?
I may have to ponder, but I believe it's Sixth Street to First Street. Is that correct? Five-block area.
And is First Street going to be open going east and west?
First Street's going to be open going east, it'll be closed going west.
Okay. So traffic crossing the bridge will then have to turn, if they're coming from the south, have to turn east.
East and detour down to 72nd. We're going to kind of close it cattywampus in the middle, and between First and Second Streets, there's going to be food vendors and everything. The cones and all that, it's between Second and First Streets for that bridge project will be removed that, on that Saturday morning, and we'll set them back up when we reopen the road at midnight Saturday night, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, it's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Right now, with only one lane being open.
Yeah.
And how's that going to work, that they're going to go around the corner and all, but you've got that all worked out?
Yeah, we've got that figured out, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the administrative report? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Sir.
Seconded by Councilman Florence. Two of the applications are manager changes on liquor licenses, and I believe the applicants are here if you've got any questions. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Mr. Jaworski. Oh, thank you.
Seven A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have nothing for first or second readings. Next on the agenda is item F1, Resolution R150133, Resolution to approve a declaration of trust and inter-local agreement to participate in the Nebraska Liquid Asset Fund, NLF. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R150133?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven A's, zero N's.
Really short agenda tonight. We're onto committee reports. The Finance Administration Committee did meet. Mr. Ingberg?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the Finance Administration Committee met to review the water, wastewater rate study that we've just completed. If you recall, we do this every four years at minimum to make sure that the rates are reflective of what we need to do to operate. The full committee recommended that it move forward the process, so it should be on the next council agenda for the water rate. And then the third and final reading of the water rate changes will also include the wastewater, because that's by resolution. So we'll vote on both of those on the third meeting. I will tell you that as part of the discussion of the committee, we recommended that the staff internally, every year, review informally, so to speak, what the rate that we have at that time, how it's, if it's accurate and reflective, because some of it is making some assumptions. We also recommend that we continue to do the full water and wastewater study every four years to make sure we get a good thorough, keep a good thorough handle on it, and future councils do as well. Finally, well, not finally, second to last, I asked that all of the, or some other committee had asked that all the study material we had as Finance Committee, you should be receiving an email that has all of the same attachments. If you weren't on the committee, like Mr. Glover and, and Mr. Gaines and Mr. Stube and Luann, that way you have the same material ahead of the next, before you have to vote, so you could review it. And finally, TD Square shortly will have a report out within maybe 30 days or so, Marty, correct? Where they'll have some projections of growth and needs in future years, so you should be expecting to see that too, in 30 days plus. So that'll be on the agenda, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We do have a closed session tonight, so we'll go ahead and do comments first. Any comments from the floor? Yes. If you'd state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Tom Forl. I live in the Eagle Ridge subdivision, and I'd just like to extend an invitation to all the residents of the city of Papillion to come enjoy our splash pad in our own little unannexed city that we have there in Eagle Ridge.
Really want to thank you for the partnership on, on that whole project. I think it went a long ways to build relationships as well. Mr. Mumgarth?
Yeah, I just want to echo that, that that splash pad would not exist without the residents of that Eagle Ridge SID. First off, voting for a board that was willing to partner with us, and then secondly, the board being so cooperative to partner with us, that we could not have done that alone, clearly, and it wouldn't be there, and those kids wouldn't be having that kind of fun if it hadn't been for the residents of that SID, and I thank them very much personally.
Thank you again. Any other comments from the floor? Council comments. Mr. Glover.
I just want to know if Mr. Mumgarth's been out there in his speedo train. [laughter] Mr. Mumgarth has been there, but has not been through, so if we have a grand opening of some sort, does Mr. Mumgarth stand for? I would expect that the council members would be in their joint, maybe the whole hand.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Dan had mentioned some projects. I wanted to mention, I played at Terror Hill Golf Course last night. Want to thank Tom and his staff for work on the cart paths. Anybody that rides a cart to play in golf at Terror Hills will recognize the improvement, so thank him for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Just a few comments. Nope. Mr. Ingberg?
As long as we're talking about projects, because it really hasn't been mentioned here, if you've noticed, log 72nd Street and through there, that trail is finally almost completed, and we've talked about that for many years, so I appreciate everybody's effort to get that put in, because there's been some concern with a few people in my, in my areas especially, so thanks for the work on that.
Thank you very much. A few things from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Hoynes, Mr. Lemmy, Mr. Thompson, Chief Bowes, and myself attended MAPPA Council of Officials Luncheon. That was hosted in Papillion at Midlands Hospital. That was nice for people to see that facility and start understanding what an asset that is to the community. It's our largest employer, and it does a lot of good things, so it was good for, to get people in there from around the region. We also had a ribbon-cutting, urgent care Papillion South. That was an expansion of a second location, so local Papillion business actually expanding in Papillion. Pete Crane opening up another location on 72nd Street. Then Lori, your team did a great job on the triathlon. Everybody that went in the water came out of the water safely. They'll all come out, it's just safely come out. Does tremendous work. The volume of people that go into the lake, a lot of, I think a lot of people think they're going to swim in a triathlon, and then once they get into murky water without a bottom, people kicking them, they start panicking, and safety is a huge issue. So we've got, Chief has folks there, the sheriff has boats there, Omaha Fire has ski-dos there with rescue teams. I think the entire lifeguard team of Lori's is there, so very, very, very professional, so thank you for that. Also continued to ask. Also continued to have some meetings on Veterans Park and on the community center. And the employees had a recognition picnic that was hosted by the Personnel Committee, and I want to just thank them for everything they're doing. A lot of organizations have gone through a lot of change, whether it's a death of a key employee, or new department heads coming on board. There's been a lot of change in the city in the last 90 days, and so just a recognition of the employees for the great job they're doing. With that, we do have a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest, to discuss potential litigation regarding annexation and jurisdictional issues?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
I'll restate for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss